Going to vote of appeals to order. We have a motion go for the public hearing.
Oh, second.
All over favor.
Aye.
So, first order business of the minutes from Tuesday, March 4th. Anybody have any?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Line forty-seven, Joe. Second page. Okay. I didn't recommend. I kind of stated, that's a fact, that isn't the code.
Okay.
So I was just kind of like pointing out, like highlighted, I guess, or something along those lines. It stated that, you know, you can change, recommended to stated, because anything new has to already be designed for, to support the weight of the panels.
Anybody have anything else? So with that change in mind, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
Uh-huh.
All over favor.
Aye.
So, uh, the purpose of this meeting tonight is that we scared off everybody coming in front of us to get a variance or a special permit. So staff thought it would be a good time to address, or at least investigate some areas of the table of principal use and regulations. And they've highlighted some, not with any favoritism or anything else, but just to kind of look at them and say, does this make sense or does it not make sense? So Joe, you have comments, so go ahead.
Yeah, so just as you were alluding to, uh, you know, we just think it's a healthy practice to look at some uses over time that may or may not change. And look at our zoning districts and see, are there instances where it could make sense on a case-by-case basis to change something that would otherwise require a use variance to something that would be a special permit? So that way it opens up some opportunity and, um, people would be generally more willing to apply for something where they see, oh, it's a special permit option versus a no, and they have to try to meet the use variance standard. So, just to, you know, provide the opportunity for someone to seek a special permit with, you know, potentially you all. Um, and you would still have the opportunity to review it case by case. So, like you also alluded to, don't have our hearts set on any particular ones. You know, the example that may come to mind is just a couple of months ago, you had a light manufacturing used over at three sixty-four Littleton Road. But because they crossed an employee threshold, it was from being allowed to not being allowed, because they had five employees instead of four or less. So then they were required to get a use variance. Thankfully, they weren't, you know, uh, turned off from getting use variance, but other ones we have spoken to, they see the, the no, not allowed, and then they don't even want to apply. So, could be some development opportunity, just to give it option.
Okay, so the very first one that you have highlighted under principal use or residential uses is the conversion of a dwelling
Yeah.
in the CH and the IH district. So I guess my question is, are there many properties residential in those?
Not many, it'd be, you know, a handful, they'd have to be an existing single-family dwelling, um, in existence since before zoning, so before nineteen fifty-five, in order to even try to, you know, attain this. So it would impact a handful or less even of properties, but again, it's just something that would give someone an opportunity if it was changed from an N to SPA.
So, if I was to guess, I would say most of it's on Route forty.
Uh, one ten.
One ten.
CH and IH generally, and I have the zoning map up here, if there is any place you want to look at where a particular district is. Generally along this area here, uh, Littleton Road, Powers Road, um, Technology Park Drive over in this area. There is a really small segment of commercial highway up in the corner around Makepeace. So.
Joe, question for you, so is the conversion of a dwelling, would that be taken as conversion of a, one of our brick and mortar
Nope.
offices to residential?
So it'd have to be a single-family, existing single-family.
It has to be.
Yep. That was in place before zoning, so before nineteen fifty-five. So it'd be a pre-existing non-conformant structure already anyway.
It's only one.
So there's only, yeah, one or two.
Well, you got that one, and you got down across from the Chauva Tech, you got, uh, the guy's house.
Yeah, it's generally in that area.
Daryl's place.
Yeah.
And then further down on the right-hand side, you got, it used to be Fumiya's letter-in-shop.
Yeah.
On the corner. So.
See, it's only one or two properties.
Yeah, you're only talking about a handful of properties. Any comments from the board? So, do we want to make it a special permit?
Okay.
Okay, so that one's going to be special permit in CH and IH. So, in the IH district, what do we got in the IH district? I mean.
So this one right here, I think you were alluding to one of them.
Is that on Kalau Road?
Uh, this one's on Littleton Road.
It's like the one across from the tech.
Yeah, right across from the tech. It's split zone between CH and IH. So, I don't know how the, the line got drawn there.
So go to Kalau Road, Joe. Oh, so that, oh, right here, here you go. So, um, seventeen dash seventy-three is one, that's that little ranch house that sits next to Liberty Way.
But that's, yeah.
It's partially, right? Very little. Very little. Yeah, that's the house. Alongst the guys from the Chinese restaurant. And that was one of the ones that they wanted to put into the M B T A housing, right?
Yep. Yeah, so that's in our Residence A.
And what about further up Kalau Road, there's nothing, because that's all commercial highway, right? Yeah, seventeen five, seventeen fifty-one, all of those are all residential A, right?
Yep.
Pet store, the log cabin.
That's seventeen fifty-one.
Seventeen twenty-nine?
Yeah. Yeah, seventeen twenty-one. What is that, that's already commercial, right?
Right.
CH. So that's a non-issue.
Right, so yeah, it's really only one or two properties, um, that would get impacted by this one, and it would have to be, you know, a pre-existing single-family.
Well, I have no problem.
Across from Western Custom Floors is a multi-family, I think it's a dual place.
No.
The Papa's property.
Yeah.
There's two apartments in there.
Yeah, it's a two-family.
I think it is a multi-family. There's two apartments in there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a two-family, yeah.
I don't think it's legally a two-family.
Details.
Yeah.
Well, his brother.
All right, well, I don't have any problem making those special permits also, that conversion of dwelling. Uh, the next one you picked out was hospital and clinic in the IH district.
Yep. And there may be some, you know, reason why IH was left out here before, but CH was included as well as some other industrial districts, which would otherwise be along Route forty, um, so along your major, I guess, thoroughfares in town. So, why IH was not included for that potential, not entirely sure. But again, IH is Littleton Road, Powers Road area.
And that may be a good one to have for that Tech Park East, is that it? All because they're trying to do some stuff down there, and that might be, you know, opening for a new tenant.
Yep.
You know, a walk-in medical center or whatever the, whatever they please at this part of the game.
Yep. So, we can, let's maybe make that one an SPA as well.
Yep.
Okay.
And then greenhouse or nursery farm stand in RA and RB.
Yeah, both greenhouse and temporary greenhouse or farm stand, I guess, as well.
Yeah, the two of them, side by side.
Yeah.
I, I, I still think the N is good, in my opinion, the N is good there, because I don't want a farm stand opening up next to my house. I mean, I don't, I don't have any. I mean, the only place that I can think of that exists today is down on Plain Road, Fletcher's Farm Stand. Pretty sure that's a residential lot, but pre-existing.
Yep.
And no one's complaining about it. Right next to the tracks, Joe, yep.
Yeah, so, yep, Residence A, area there, Residence B here. Obviously much greater impact than some of the first examples we were looking at, just in terms of how many properties it impacts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, other than that, does anybody else think of anything? I mean, what about, uh, Dr. Mulcher over there on?
East Prescott.
Prescott. I don't know what that's zoned. It's been there a long time, but it doesn't mean it's own.
It's a gas station, right?
Yeah.
It's Cody's gas station.
Yeah.
We know about.
It's got to be up around thirty-seven, thirty-nine. How about that house?
Yeah.
We'll put that one in, what do you want?
Cash.
It looks like Residence B.
Right around there.
Somewhere in that area.
Yeah.
Have you tried, one of those two, what, what's five, fifty-seven?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-seven?
Yeah, that looks, that's it.
Oh yeah, seventy-eight, so it's on the other side of the street.
So it's in business.
That's business?
Yep.
Okay.
What about the, um, they do a farm stand that, that they could pick a farm?
Yeah, that's another one.
Good picking farm, which is.
Oh, yep. What do you need?
RA. It's all RA.
Yep.
I don't know what they're doing with that.
Yeah, they kind of get everything in the world going up there.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
So again, I mean, it would be special permit if anyone were to try to do any of that.
Yep. You know, that's existing, I don't know how long it's been there now, I lose track of time. And that was kind of a deal, I guess. I don't know what you want to call it, but it was something. RA and RB, whatever the hell the names were. So what do you think, you want to make it SPA on that one also? Or keep the no? I, I'm in favor of keeping the no, because if they're that anxious, they'll come in front of us.
Yeah.
Okay. So those two are the no's, those are going to stay.
Yep.
Then your veterinary hospital and clinic, um, IH and IA.
Yeah, so generally again, Littleton Road, Powers Road for IH, IA, Route forty area.
So it's, it's only a limited portion of, um, Littleton Road. I mean, it's mostly off of Littleton Road down in, uh, the side areas. Most of one, uh, most of one-ten is commercial highway. I think all of one-ten is commercial highway.
Good chunk of it, yeah.
You brought up Tech Park for the human cooking.
Yep.
Yeah, one piece of property up at Tanmic Road with IA, I don't even know how you get access to it.
Yeah, it's also covered in swamp.
Is that where Mystery Springs is?
Uh, I'm thinking so.
Right across from Chip's house.
Oh yeah, down in there, yeah, yeah.
It's landlocked, but it's I H.
Yeah, it's all.
Right next to the bridge.
Yep.
It's a pretty good piece of land, huh? It is wet though.
It's all.
Oh yeah? Really wet.
Yeah.
It's a nice, I'm something to say about that.
Yeah, IH otherwise, you have a couple of properties, uh, there, right towards the Chelmsford line. The couple smaller, uh, industrial properties right across Powers Road. We have like British delights, um, it's one there.
That's all IH?
That's IH, yeah.
Machine shop, I think.
Yeah, British machines there, yeah. And the Route forty, uh, section really towards, again, the Chelmsford line. These smaller properties over there.
Those all have commercial buildings standing on them right now, right?
Right.
I mean, SPA for those?
I would say so.
Okay.
Okay. Retail sales to the general public in IH, I guess the no is what we're looking at, so it's the.
So, yeah, again, um, I don't know why we didn't allow retail sales in those areas. Like, maybe the thought was that we wanted to reserve them for, you know, more office type of use as opposed to retail. At least at the time the districts were created. But, yeah, we just thought, you know, maybe it's an opportunity to allow by special permit some option in those. Especially if someplace like Tech Park East was to start incorporating more uses and amenities for employees that were going to be there.
I mean, Powers Road, you just mentioned, uh, British delights.
Yeah.
They've been there working for a long time.
Yeah.
It's my recollection, they came in front of us, so.
It's Kimball's? Industrial highway?
Uh, they have.
First two hundred feet is commercial highway.
Huh?
They have their own. Area across the street where it's generally parking lot.
Across the street, okay.
And they have this little area over here, which I don't know, it's really used for anything right now. That's why we did the commercial rec overly district, to try to make that permitting a little more straight line, as opposed to trying to pick one district over another, I guess. Between them and the Chauva, because the Chauva's all split in there as well. Now those got, in those zones over time, those individual parcels, I'm not entirely sure of the history, but.
There's a lot of deals made down at the Yowar. So. Okay, retail sales to the general public at IH, SPA for that? So, the next one is nursing and convalescent homes under commercial highway. So, Westford Nursing Home, isn't that in a commercial highway district?
That's over off of.
Oak Drive, yeah. Should be right there.
Yeah.
That's residential.
Yeah.
Buildings on either side going in on.
Commercial. Yeah, because the commercial highway like goes in two hundred feet.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes sense to put a nursing home in a commercial area.
Yeah.
The other one is, uh, down one-ten at the corner of South Chelmsford Road, the memory place.
All bridges.
Yeah, bridges.
There like that, it's in the commercial highway.
Yep, so that's already in there. Part of it is, part of it isn't. I mean, when they came to us to do that, because on twenty-two, one thirty-five, that's the sewage treatment plant. A leaching field for the parcel across the street. And then the, the little building next to it is the sewage treatment plant.
Yeah.
Because don't they have to clean out down on South Chelmsford Road? Because they've got the trucks and up on there.
Yeah, oh yes, they do, yep, yep. So, I would say make that an SPA anyway. Nursing and convalescent. Funeral home, we've only got one. I'm sure it's in a residential A district or residential B district.
And for some reason, you know, and on this one, commercial highway was marked as a yes. And, you know, that was just necessarily the highest and best use for one of our main commercial corridors. I don't know, just you.
I would just leave it the way it is, I wouldn't change it.
That's fine.
Hotel in the IH, is a big no.
Not necessarily, we'll see many, at least large, I think, hotels, you might see more smaller boutique hotels nowadays. In the hotel industry, but, um, again, it's right near one of our major commercial corridors, good access to the highway. Why it's ending on a special permit there, I'm not entirely sure. Especially when there is a hotel in the IH right now.
Yep.
So.
And then the, the long-term Marriott next to my building down there, I think is a split zone. I think it's, must be.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
Yep, see, it's part commercial, part IH, residence married in.
So, that could make some sense. Just to maybe allow a special permit there.
Yep, would say so. Place of amusements and assembly, what the hell does that mean?
Uh, that would be, I guess, your amusement parks, uh, things that might have like arcades or things like that. I think it's.
Wouldn't that ultimately be already be covered under the overlay district?
That's a good question. When you look at our definitions, trying to, I'll pull, try to pull it up here. I don't know why it's not pulling up. Amusement park. There's some standard attainment, usually with the sale of food or drink. And then you look at commercial recreation. More so talking about tennis, swimming, bowling alleys, pool halls, excluding amusement parks. Maybe the arcades, horse racing, dog racing, or anything involving motorized vehicles.
That's kind of an interesting one, wasn't it?
Yeah, but a lot of that, did that stem from when Dick Joy, who wanted to have the arcade thing there? People were going crazy because they thought all the teenagers were going to hang out there and go to hell.
Yeah.
He wanted to double it, I mean, it was a hell of a thing. He never got.
No.
What he wanted, and, you know, he got restricted on the hours. It's a mess, I mean, you, you think about it today, what a joke.
Yeah. Well, the same thing happened when, when Kimball's wanted to put in their amusement area or the arcade area. I remember clearly you saying, it's not a bad thing to have these kids in one spot to do something fun and have recreation. So.
Yeah, well, don't you, that brings back some memories.
Jesus Christ, I know, David, you're dating yourself, buddy. I, I, I'm of the belief to leave the, leave those as no's, and if someone wants to come in front of us, they can. But I mean, that's just me, what does everybody else think?
I'm going to use Kimball's as an example, they, they're already at the overlay. I don't know what the difference is.
Well, the overlay is site-specific, right?
Yeah, it's site-specific, but their parts.
Their part of town. So if someone else came in and said, okay, I want to put in an amusement park, where market basket is.
They have to come and see us.
They have to come and see us.
But he, he, Kimball's is coming for us all the time for what they want to do, don't they?
They have, yes, in the past, they have, yep.
They've always got what they want, too.
What's that?
They've always got what they wanted.
They have, because they, it's, they run a great operation.
They have expanded, and they've always been confident.
Yep. So, I, I would say leave it.
Okay.
Personal service establishment, we haven't had one of those since the, the early eighties up on, uh, up on the hill there, Anderson's Orchard.
You pulled up the definition for this. So barber shop, beauty parlor, spa, salon, photography, health center, or lake facility, excluding massage parlor. That's your personal service establishment.
So down below, we also have body art establishment, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, in the past, we've had people come in front of us for these tattoo studios, the eye studios and all that stuff. And we've granted it.
Yeah. Yep. Right now it's just restricted to the commercial highway.
I mean, what, I, I don't think it matters if they're going in an SPA, going in the industrial highway. Once again, Tech Park East, if they have an opportunity to put salons in there or do something else as part of their whole area.
Why not?
Why not, right?
Okay.
And number twenty-two, body art establishment.
Yeah.
Same thing, I mean, there's an opportunity to get some new businesses in town.
Okay.
And then the adult daycare facility. I think there's already one down there on, uh, Liberty Way, isn't that an IH district? I think they came in front of us.
Yep.
To get that.
Yep.
It's again, it's, it's greatly needed.
Yep. Yeah, especially as the population's aging.
Yep. Are you saying something about us, Joe?
No, no, not at all, no.
Yeah, New Path is the one down there on Liberty Way.
Is that who it is?
Yeah.
They seem to do a good job, I mean. So, light manufacturing in the CH district. So light manufacturing has, so right below it is light manufacturing, not more than four employees. So just straight like, light manufacturing, is it limited as far as?
Right, so, yeah, depending on the number of employees you have, you're more or less restricted, in the cut up being four or less, or five or more. So, if you have more than five employees, you're allowed in the industrial A, industrial B, industrial C districts. If you have four or less, you're not allowed in those areas, which seems a little odd, if you're going to allow a larger operation, you're not even getting the opportunity for a smaller operation. On the flip side, um, obviously if it's a larger operation, right now it's a no in commercial highway. You just add the use variance, that was the one I gave the example of, the three sixty-four Littleton. They had five employees with the hopes to go up to twelve. Sometime in the future, but they came in front of you for the use variance. That's right here.
Well, that was the business that the woman was selling to that.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Took from Chelmsford.
Yep, we took it from Chelmsford, that's a win. I mean, as far as light manufacturing goes, I don't have a problem with light manufacturing, not more than four employees. In IA, IB, and IC, I mean, that's, in my mind, when they developed these industrial areas, it was for manufacturing.
Yeah.
Back in the day, when that group got together, they tried to think of all this stuff. Times have changed, I guess, a little bit, so. What does everybody else think? SPA for the whole bunch.
Okay. That was all the ones we had highlighted.
Did anybody else have any other issues that they would like to look at and talk about?
No, that's fine, you know, we just, so we wanted to generate the discussion, see if there's anything you're open to, um, you know, just giving an option.
You know, this may change again when we get down the road.
Yeah.
You keep mentioning this Tech Park East. You know, in here, I just was, I was looking at some of this stuff and, um, restaurants. You know, industrial C, not allowed. You may, you may have these groups coming in front of us, different things in there. And that's okay, that's fine. Indoor motion picture establishment, has there ever been a movie theater in town?
Yeah, there was.
Was there?
You said the Yelks on Coldwood Street?
I was gonna say the Yelks, or wasn't there a movie theater down in Ford?
On, not Brappett Street.
On Brappett Street.
Yeah. Yelks.
Danny might have been too young.
Oh, yeah. Yelks had the bowling alley.
Yelks had the bowling alley.
Yeah. Flyers play. Eric. Thank you all. That's all we had, so, happy to take those and. Work them and maybe see if there's an opportunity for, for you guys to know by law.
So if, if we choose to amend these, the bylaw with all of these things, those would have to go to town meeting?
Town meeting, yeah. So we'd have a hearing and see if there's any comments and if people think any of those don't make sense, obviously, we'll bring it back to you all. Let you know the comments were and see if you have a reconsideration.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that would be an improvement.
I was gonna say, the times are changing.
Well, yeah, I mean. Just in the last five years, things have changed drastically and. You gotta keep up with the times, 'cause I think the, the, uh, the Industrial Commission was formed in. Nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen eighty, that did all this zoning. Think about what the changes have happened since then. And that was kind of a, a group of guys that got together and, and women. And if you had a piece of property on one-ten or on Route forty or whatever, they said, okay, we're gonna have a meeting, come on in, okay, what do you want? What do you want? What do you want? What do you want? Okay, great, you got it, and that's how it was done. Arthur Abud. I think was the chair. Max Skalnick, Jack Robel, there's a whole group of those guys that have been around for a long time. Alright.
So, so Scud Wood, does anybody know or remember what happened to Cornerstone? You know, Cornerstone Square was pitched by Norman Kamala as a leisure mall. And it somehow got hung up in the courts and they lost their financial deal, so. In came, I, and I, I don't think I'm making this up, I think it's from, Demoles came in with money and sort of saved them.
Yep.
But they, they destroyed any concept of the, the mall, the leisure mall. And then, and on top of that, there were no medical or dental buildings allowed. And then they got rolled in.
Right.
Becau- but for financing, right, is that?
Yeah, so that you're.
Have that right, so, I mean, so you got, so you didn't get a, you got a compromised leisure mall with incredible type parking. I mean, that's, this is a Robert Walker special.
So, I think what happened was. He came in front of us, do you remember this?
I, I remember, but, but that was, that was after all.
The only thing, because we denied it, remember? We had to deny it, wasn't that the case? And then it went back to the planning board for the new reiteration of it. Yes, Demoles came in and they financed the whole project, but I think part of their finance deal was they had to have the market sitting where it was with the adjacent parking around it, and then everything else, they didn't really care about.
Well, the only thing I can remember is we said no, they wanted to take some more land on Boston Road. And we said, no way, because traffic is gonna be, always be an issue when you.
Right.
You can't take, you really can't compromise, and it turns out, I, I think they did a reasonable job with the traffic, not perfect, but.
Yeah.
It flows.
And it was also something to do with the off-ramp coming off of four-ninety-five.
Well, there was a house where Burgles.
Yeah, yeah, it used to belong to Dave Merrill, the real estate broker, and he had a real estate office there. And so, that was another whole issue with that whole project. But I, I remember clearly town council saying to us, you have to deny this project. Okay, no. And then it went back to the planning board, for whatever legal reason was, and I can't remember that far back, but I remember that happened, so.
And cleared the trees. Before you had his permits.
Yes, yes.
He just clear-cut the whole corner.
And the Zeus Building burned down mysteriously, a car caught on fire.
A car, it was a nice Cadillac Escalade.
In the middle of the night, right?
A few gas cans in the back.
Yeah, but you could have had a Walmart.
Well, yeah, you could have had a Walmart, absolutely, absolutely. Alright, so I guess we've closed the meeting, correct?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Real motion to adjourn, so move. Second?
Second.
Halls in favor?